Good afternoon and welcome to the August 27th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a round?
Councilmember Brotman?
Here.
Carpetian?
Here.
Kasakian?
Here.
And Mayor Asadarian?
Here. So how can we don't do a pledge of allegiance for this meeting?
You're just looking to slow things down.
Okay. May we have your report?
The agenda for the Tuesday, August 27, 2024 Special Public Meeting of the City Council was posted on August 22, 2024 on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
All right. I think I'm gonna take the meeting out of order, provided that Councilmember Kasakian is still stuck in another meeting and he's trying to join. And the item, the first item on the agenda is something that he had inquired about, Councilmember Carpetian had inquired about, I had, everybody had inquired about. So if we can do that, let's, let's take number two first.
Item number two, City Attorney Regarding Discussion of Impact of U.S. Supreme Court's Grants Pass Decision on Enforcement of Anti-Camping Ordinance Summary of Services for the Unhoused: A Motion Providing Direction to Staff.
Madam Mayor, members of council, as we're getting the other PowerPoint up, let me just introduce Aaron Israel. He's been in our office for about six months now. We snatched him up from the city of Sacramento and he actually has a significant amount of experience dealing with homeless issues with Sacramento PD.
No pun intended on the snatching, right?
All right. He, he was closely watching Grants Pass and so this provides a perfect opportunity to discuss the impact of that case as it was going through the Ninth Circuit and through the Supreme Court and some of the challenges it presented with regard, regards to unlawful camping ordinance that we have on the books. So he'll walk you through that and then discuss some of the, some of the impacts of the outcome of that case and what we can expect going forward. And then there's a part of the presentation from Community Services and Parks that will talk generally about some of our homeless outreach service programs. So with that, I will turn it over to Aaron.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. As the City Attorney said, my name is Aaron Israel. I'm Senior Assistant in the City Attorney's Office as of February. Since I believe that this is my first time appearing before you, I wanted to take this opportunity to say that it is my privilege to serve this city and I thank you for the opportunity to do that. This afternoon, among other things, I'm going to discuss the Supreme Court's decision in the case of Johnson versus City of Grants Pass, which was decided in June of this year. The line of cases actually begins with a predecessor case decided five years earlier, Martin versus City of Boise. And in a nutshell, that case provides that criminally punishing the unhoused for sleeping in public places when they have no alternatives available to them criminalizes homelessness under the Eighth Amendment to the United States Constitution. The Eighth Amendment, of course, quoted in this slide, provides that cruel and unusual punishments shall not be inflicted. Primary impact of the Martin case is that municipalities may not enforce ordinances that impose criminal sanctions for sleeping, sitting, or lying in all property in a jurisdiction. So what that means is an ordinance that applies citywide, countywide, or districtwide would be unenforceable in the absence of sufficient alternative shelter. Turning to sufficient alternative shelter, those ordinances were unenforceable when alternative sleeping space was practically unavailable. The term practically unavailable, although somewhat ambiguous in the decision, is generally understood to mean available to the person against whom enforcement action would be taken, accounting for their individual circumstances. How does that, or the case, affect the city of Glendale? Glendale Municipal Code Section 9.28.030 begins by providing that it's unlawful for any person to camp or use camp paraphernalia in or on any public park, street, sidewalk, or other public property. The term "camp" means residing in or using public property for nighttime living accommodation purposes such as sleeping activities and making preparations to sleep overnight. After the Ninth Circuit decided Martin in September of 2018, this section, 9.28.030, would be unenforceable in the absence of adequate alternative shelter. And the city of Glendale is not alone. This case affected enforcement in the nine western states under the jurisdiction of the Ninth Circuit, as well as Guam and the Northern Mariana Islands. Five years later, the Ninth Circuit took up a case called Johnson versus City of Grants Pass, and the Ninth Circuit reaffirmed its decision in Martin versus City of Boise and extended it in three respects. First, the Ninth Circuit held that a jurisdiction could not impose civil citations for sitting, sleeping, or lying on public property against people experiencing homelessness if, when that conduct was repeated, the offense became criminal in nature. The case precluded municipalities from prohibiting the use of articles necessary to facilitate sleep on public property. And it also held, as relevant to us in the City Attorney's Office, that under Boise, the involuntarily homeless could sue municipalities as a class. In June of this year, the United States Supreme Court issued its decision, having agreed to take up writ of certiorari, and the Supreme Court, by a vote of six to three, reversed the Ninth Circuit's decision in Johnson and thereby overturned Martin versus City of Boise. As a result of that decision, the enforcement of generally applicable laws that regulate camping on public property do not violate the Eighth Amendment. What that means for us here in the city of Glendale is that Section 9.28.030 is enforceable as it was before the Ninth Circuit issued its decision in Boise in 2018. But it bears worth noting that Grants Pass does not alter the constitutional and statutory requirements for confiscation and noticing of personal property. Johnson and its predecessor case Martin were Eighth Amendment cases, and people experiencing homelessness retain Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment protection to an extent in articles of personal property that they keep in public. So first, under the Fourth Amendment and California law, personal property with objective value that is removed from public places must be held for at least 60 days for safekeeping. And under the Fourteenth Amendment, advance notice must be provided before personal property is removed from public places, except in the event of an imminent threat to public health or safety. As I'm sure you're all aware, on July 25th of this year, the Governor of California directed state authorities to develop policies for the removal of encampments from state property and notably state right-of-ways. The Governor also encouraged local authorities to develop policies consistent with the Caltrans policy that governs removal of encampments from state rights of way. The Governor also directed the Interagency Council on Homelessness to provide local authorities with additional support in the form of guidance and technical assistance on the implementation of local homelessness programs. Turning to our city's unlawful camping ordinance, which is codified in the Glendale Municipal Code at Chapter 9.28. The provisions I previously quoted to you apply only to the use of public property for nighttime living accommodations or making preparations to sleep overnight. This council might consider clarifying the existing provisions or expanding them to prohibit daytime camping in addition to nighttime camping or direct staff to explore other changes.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Of course, Madam Mayor.
With respect to daytime camping, does this council have any authority to put its own policies into place?
Yes. Within, within the city limits of the city of Glendale, the city council could direct staff to explore, to prepare an ordinance that, in addition to prohibiting the use of public property for nighttime living accommodations or making preparations to sleep overnight, prohibits the use of public property for living accommodations or sleeping at any time of the day or night.
Thank you. Continue.
At this point, I will turn the presentation over to Arsenay Sayan of the Department of Community Services and Parks to discuss Glendale Continuum of Care.
Arsenay, if you don't mind, I have, if I can pose some questions and if my colleagues have questions, then we can move into the, that portion. I'll start. Do my colleagues have questions at this point?
I don't think so.
So I think we've, I'm not sure what's in your presentation, but some of the items that I'm interested in having some answers to is how police and our homeless services are, are working together right now. And some of the additional services that we have available for like substance abuse and mental health. I think one of your slides talked about the, the practical, practically available. That was initially part of the Martin case and how, how does that apply for any ordinances we wanna?
It doesn't any longer, Mayor. The, Arsenay, as a prerequisite to enforcement while Martin was in effect, the city would have to make an offer of shelter before it could enforce the Glendale Municipal Code. And that shelter had to be practically available to the person against whom enforcement was going to be taken. So by way of example, if a, in the Martin case itself, if a shelter bed, the duration of stay in a shelter bed had a religious component and that ran contrary to a person's exercise of their freedom of religion, it was not practically available to them. That requirement is no longer in place due to the Supreme Court's decision in Grants Pass.
All right. Arsenay, do you wanna come to the presentation and ask questions?
So I'll do a very quick overview of the Glendale COC and then I'm happy to answer any questions you might have that are not on the slide. So, good afternoon, Mayor Asadarian, members of city council. I wanted to provide just a brief overview of the Glendale Continuum of Care and how we operate and respond to the needs of those who are unhoused in our community and those who are at risk. So the Glendale COC operates, we have a single point of entry for our homeless services. We have three agencies. Ascencia serves as our lead agency, as you all know, for homeless individuals who are seeking assistance. We have an access center that's located here at the city of Glendale at 1851 Tyburn Street. In addition to the access center, they have a 45-bed shelter here in the city. For homeless families, we coordinate with LA Family Housing. The city of Glendale is part of a service planning area two in LA County, one of eight service planning areas. And so we coordinate with the LA Family Housing that's based out of LA. And we also work with Home Again Los Angeles here in Glendale to kind of serve as a bridge between Glendale and LA Family Housing to expedite referrals for our homeless families. For all of our DV families, those who are fleeing, we do coordinate very closely with the YWCA of Glendale and Pasadena, but we also offer services through other agencies in the county if we are able to make referrals. So that's just a really quick general overview of our coordinated entry system. And we've done it this way to avoid duplication and to streamline services for the clients who are trying to get services here in our municipality, in Glendale. As I mentioned, Glendale is in Service Planning Area Two, one of eight service planning areas that are in the county. The county is divided up between the multiple planning areas. I do really wanna make this point, and I think it's really important for the public to those who are watching, to understand that we not only are part of Service Planning Area Two, but we also share territorial boundary with Service Planning Area Four, Metro LA. And during this past homeless PIT count, SPA Two, the county actually saw a reduction in their homeless count numbers. However, SPA Two saw an increase in their homeless count by 2%. Within SPA Two, we had over 10,000 people. Within our region, we had over 10,000 people that were experiencing homelessness, of which 56% were unsheltered, around a little over 6,900. In addition to that, within SPA Four, we actually saw 18, over 18,000 people experiencing homelessness, of which 66% were unsheltered, around a little bit over 12,000. So I really wanna highlight this point because this creates some challenges for our COC. Just when we're trying to identify our, our local gaps and needs and we're trying to expand and scale up services and programs, the challenging part is we see this spillover. We see this influx of transients and clients trying to get help wherever they can. So any policy, that, any policies that LA City or the county pass, any programs, you know, encampment resolution programs, Pathway Home, these are all different programs that they are scaling up. It does tend to impact our COC as well as other surrounding cities like Burbank and Pasadena and so on. So I really wanted to emphasize this point because it, it has been really challenging for us in terms of resources. Jumping into outreach services, so the city of Glendale does have its own outreach program. We have several agencies that serve on our outreach teams. Of course, we have Ascencia. We do have, this is actually our outreach flyer that's posted on our website, that's available at various community centers, and our outreach teams also pass these flyers out. Ascencia provides outreach Monday through Friday. They have their contact information so the public can reach out to Ascencia directly to request outreach services. Home Again LA also provides outreach services throughout the week for homeless families. And of course, our Glendale Police Department, the core unit, also provides outreach services around the clock. We do have an online app, the Glendale App, so residents can also submit requests online. If they happen to come across any encampments or any other issues, they can also put in a request through our city's website. We also have the, a local shower program in partnership with the Salvation Army here in Glendale, Mondays and Fridays, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. We actually offer warm meals and showers to those who are unhoused in our community. And we also provide wraparound services onsite. In fact, we're in the process of trying to expand our shower program to bring in various providers to help connect with our unhoused neighbors. So that's another effort, thanks to our local Measure S funds. Thanks to the city council for approving the budget, we're able to provide this year long, year long. I did just wanna briefly talk about our existing programs and services based on our, our funding, current funding. We have a little bit of over $5 million in grant funds, local, state, and federal funds. We receive Measure S funds. We have our annual Continuum of Care Program funds that we compete for annually. This is the $2.9 million that we actually come to council every year requesting your approval to submit our grant applications. For, and this $2.9 million in COC funding primarily funds our existing homeless services programs. So there are no new projects that are funded through this, this funding source. We have Emergency Solutions Grant Program, ESG. These are federal funds that help us with our homeless prevention programs and rapid rehousing programs and so on and so forth. County Measure H funds, and then we also get some state funds to support our programs. I do wanna mention that majority of these programs are just one-time funding. This isn't a consistent stream of funding that comes into our COC. So we do heavily rely on our COC grant funds. About 54% of our funding comes from HUD for our Continuum of Care Program. And then as you can see, you know, we kind of wanted to provide an explanation on where the gaps are met. For example, Measure H funding is about 9% of the funds for our homeless services here in Glendale.
Question. From that Measure H funding, this is that homeless initiative that was passed, says tax increase by quarter of a percent or what have you? Is that, is that what that funded?
Yes, Councilmember Carpetian, yes, that it is from that.
So my calculation was, if I remember correctly, it was like we pay about $10 million a year to the county on Measure H, basically tax increases that we had, and we get back, what, 300, 400,000?
This past fiscal year, around 464,000.
464 from $10 million?
Correct.
I think there lies the problem that every city has.
Yes, we, yes.
Okay, thanks.
So I recognize that we have all these programs available. Between the time that we identify someone and we're able to get them situated, how long is that period in Glendale versus other cities?
We have a very streamlined process, Mayor Asadarian. So because we have our own coordinated entry system for homeless individuals, and I do have to say that we have a very close collaboration with our service providers, the response time, you cannot compare to the response time that other COCs or counties. We generally, if a person is seeking assist, assistance, we typically can even do outreach within the same day. So our outreach teams respond within a day, within 24 hours. If not, there's always some type of a follow-up. One of the things that we've done in the last two years is we have a CES outreach coordinator that's here at the city hall, staffed under my section, our team, so that if agencies are not able to quickly respond to local, you know, requests, our CES coordinator makes sure, makes, makes sure to connect with that individual or family that's seeking assistance to make sure there's a warm handoff within a reasonable amount of time. I would say typically, within 24 to 48 hours, we do have some type of a response to outreach requests.
When you say response, do you mean that person's already in shelter and wherever they need to be? Or do you mean, like, we responded to either identifying somebody that's unhoused or that they've come in or sent, sent in a request for assistance?
Sure. It could be a combination of both. So we do have our Glendale Hotel program. So now we make sure that there is hotel or some type of shelter available for those who are not refusing services. The challenge that we run into sometimes, and this is for our PD team, our PD outreach team, is a lot of people are refusing services and they're not interested in entering into some type of a program or the shelter. So in cases like that, unfortunately, we can't force people. But I, I will say confidently, at this time, at this moment, we do have a shelter bed available for those who are interested in taking advantage of, you know, the programs and the, the shelter, shelter bed.
So what would be our limitations now, I think particularly concerned with people that have mental health concerns and issues, as well as substance abuse? I would assume that those categories would be the ones that are also refusing service. Are there different kinds of services available to them? Because I don't know if, some of these shelters I know have requirements that, you know, there can't be any substance abuse, you have to be in at, at a certain time, and it creates limitations. Are there places that individuals with substance abuse or mental health issues can, can be directed to?
Mayor Asadarian, the short answer, no. The response time for those who are seeking mental health services or substance abuse-related services at the moment locally, it is very challenging for us to pull in support for the highly, you know, vulnerable clients. It's easy for us to provide the wraparound services to homeless families or those who are experiencing homelessness for the first time. But generally speaking, in fact, this influx of clients that we're seeing in our continuum, they are, you know, the clients with really high, you know, acuity, they do have multiple issues. And so we are trying to do our very best in coordinating with the county. I know that we have reached out to the Department of Mental Health to see how we can pull in their support for our outreach teams. Unfortunately, with some of the services that are available, clients have to be gravely disabled, you know, they don't quite meet the requirements of some of the programs that are available for the, you know, vulnerable population. I think that's definitely an area that we are looking into and exploring potential partnership opportunities to pull in sheltering, congregate sheltering with mental health and substance abuse services tied to it, 24/7. So when a client is in need of mental health services, we're able to provide the outreach, but also the mental health services that are tied to. The Glendale Police Department actually has a licensed DMH clinician as part of their outreach team. But again, the challenge there is there's specific criteria that the clients have to meet in order for PD and the DMH licensed clinician to move forward with the assistance. So there are a lot of barriers there that we're trying to break down. We're trying to see how we can pull in local community support for mental health, but also pull in the county's mental health team to see what can be done. I know Didi Hirsch operates here locally. I know Didi Hirsch operates here locally, as I had previously mentioned, and we currently do not have access to the services that are offered through Didi Hirsch. This is a local provider that partners with the county, but unfortunately, at this time, they are at over, you know, capacity and they're not taking in any clients. So hopefully, one of the areas that we can look at is strengthening our partnership with our local mental health providers because mental health continues to be a top priority for our COC. That's an area that we really need to strengthen.
So what happens to these individuals who don't make that threshold or don't qualify to receive the services? The ones that have multiple issues, but they don't qualify to receive the services from Didi Hirsch or other facilities that LA has or provides? What happens to them? That's why the numbers increase or that's why their condition gets worse? Or what's the plan for that? Do we have any? I know we said that we have to find more resources and everything, but meanwhile, what happens to this individual?
Councilmember Garbitian, a lot of the clients do end up, you know, in the hospital system. I know that PD, when we progressively engage with the clients, sometimes they do have to do 51-50 holds. And once they end up in the hospital system, then the hospital, through their discharge planning process, might refer clients to more of long-term facilities, you know, assisted living facilities or other types of recuperative care facilities where clients will have at least a little bit of time to stabilize before they are released back into the community or into some type of a program. Unfortunately, that has been the reality that we've seen. We see a lot of clients, sometimes, you know, incarceration, you know, if they go, you know, through that process, there's some type of level of communication between our mental health providers and the county. But unfortunately, there's only so much we can do if clients are refusing services. The only other alternative is to progressively engage with the clients until we're able to identify services that are available for them. I know that Proposition 1, there's funding opportunities through Proposition 1 that we're looking into. Care Court was another program that we're inquiring, we're continuing to inquire about from the county to see if there are any updates and how we can partner more closely with the county. The city of Glendale does participate in our monthly San Fernando Valley Council of Government meetings. We're very much involved as part of this COG. And this is one area that we've raised to our partners. We want to know what we can do to have more access to mental health resources locally and countywide. As I mentioned, a lot of the clients that we deal with on the local level here, they're also clients that are accessing services in the county. So there needs to be better care and coordination and wraparound services. And that's been elevated to the group, and I'm hoping that in the upcoming months, we'll be able to provide updates to council.
One more question for the city attorney. Mr. Israel, what happens to the individuals who, based on the court ruling, to the individuals who refuse services? What is it at that point that we can or cannot do or what are our options, basically?
Councilmember Garbitian, our office would, if an individual were cited criminally under our municipal code with a violation of the unlawful camping ordinance, and that case was viable for prosecution, we would file a criminal complaint in Superior Court. The penalty for violating a municipal ordinance is either a fine or a period of incarceration or both. For a municipal code violation, the period of incarceration is up to six months in the county jail. However, our office and municipal prosecutorial authorities throughout the state offer a range of diversionary programs to keep folks out of the criminal justice system to the extent possible and also offer pathways to services that will reduce recidivism. So by way of example, if somebody has a substance abuse problem, as part of a diversionary offer, our office might offer substance abuse treatment in lieu of paying a fine or in lieu of incarceration. Those are options that remain available to prosecutorial authorities in all cases and that would be available in these cases as well.
Okay, thank you.
I recognize that we have our police chief here. If I can, I know that we put out a press release announcing a new program through the core unit. If you can just speak briefly to that. And then I think it would be helpful for us to also hear, maybe you have some ideas around helping us with direction on this and what you guys are seeing, your collaboration also with the homeless services. I know one of the things that I had asked and talked about with the chief was providing us with updates as a council along with homeless services of what you guys are seeing out there because we get pinged and then we pass that on, but we, you know, there's no kind of closeout of what services were available or how we can help mitigate a lot of these things with policy.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Loaded questions, so I'm going to try to hit on a few different things. I'll start with highlighting the fact that we have a really good working relationship with CSP, Community Services and Parks. And at the Police Department, department-wide, we work closely with them, but specifically, Lieutenant Corrigan and our core unit, Community Outreach and Engagement folks, Sergeant Few officers, Arseny touched on it, we're, I'll say, blessed to have two Department of Mental Health clinicians that work alongside three of our officers that, you know, their full-time job, you know, each of them 40 hours plus a week, just as their baseline, go out, proactively do outreach, lead with a services-first approach, but also in turn do, sometimes, some of the enforcement that naturally comes along with it, up to and including, and we've done some as recent as the last few days, sometimes when they pop up some encampment cleanups. We've also been utilizing over the last few years, grant funds to go above and beyond those 40 hours for those individual three officers, so 120 hours if you will, to do after-hours outreach and enforcement, weekends outreach and enforcement, and we've continued to do that. Unfortunately, I'll say, and some of this is a little anecdotal, but also to some degree backed up with some levels of data in that we are seeing an increase in the amount of unhoused folks that we are seeing in and around our jurisdiction. And the why, I think, is maybe partly anecdotal, but at least from my perspective, it certainly has to do with a lot of what Arseny touched on and who we border, and particularly the city of Los Angeles, some of the work that they are doing. I will say, I think, some of that is being effective and then some that, quite frankly, is being ineffective, and what it is doing is, to some degree, displacing folks or shuffling them around and seeing them end up in our jurisdiction, which comes with a fair amount of its own challenges. When I sit and I talk to staff, both through my own experiences going out with them, as well as just kind of debriefing them, the folks that are out there, boots on the ground, doing this every day, I think it's very conservative to say that well over 90% of the folks that we contact that are unhoused, that are struggling with a lot of the things that we talked about, tend to be service-resistant, significantly service-resistant, which, again, comes with its challenges. So obviously, it is of value to us from an enforcement standpoint now with Grants Pass and the change in that because it does give us a tool. It is not the end-all, be-all, but it does give us a tool to contact these folks and do some enforcement when appropriate with good discretion. One of the things that I think is worth considering, at least from my perspective, from the law enforcement perspective, that the city attorney's office touched on, is the fact that our current municipal code speaks about nighttime hours, and that still does present some limitations for us during the day and some of the folks that will set up to do sleeping-type activity during the day right now, that's really relegated to nighttime enforcement. So certainly something for the council to consider, and I think there would be, at least from the PD's perspective, from the enforcement side of things, some value in being able to have that 24 hours a day for our enforcement piece. What else? Mayor, you asked about some of the resources that we provide. Again, obviously, our first stop for many of our resources through our COC and Arseny is going to be them, but we've also done a lot internally. She touched on our two DMH clinicians that are working with us full-time, six days a week, 40 hours a day, I'm sorry, 40 hours a week, each of our clinicians. But then we've also, through grant funding, taken on a clinical director for our substance abuse and wellness resource program. Sona Josepian works almost full-time with us at this point, and she's kind of our point person within the organization in offering services in the way of wellness and substance abuse. And she does everything from work with some of the staff and youth at our GUSD school district, coordinates counseling resources, sometimes mental health, but usually ones that are more associated with drug abuse and substance abuse. Part of what she does is she will make contact with any of our arrestees that are in our custody for substance abuse violations under the influence, drug possession, things of that nature, and offer them drug-related services. Many of the same type of programs that Arseny's talking about, but it's just a different touch, if you will, as well as kind of taking the lead on putting out educational information, both through public meetings, through what we've recently been doing on social media, on our website, really just trying to find another angle to push forward some of those resources, trying to bring them all to bear and, you know, hit it from every angle, if you will.
Okay, thank you so much.
You got it?
Do my colleagues have other questions? Comments at this point?
Not at this point.
Okay. Go ahead.
We used to have a contract with a shelter in Pacoima, am I correct? And do we still have that?
We no longer operate the winter shelter program. Years back, I know from 2007 to 2010, I believe, we did have a contract with the winter shelter program here at the Armory and also in Pacoima, but Glendale no longer operates a local winter shelter program.
And the number of individuals or homeless people in Glendale fluctuates between, I don't know, 150 to 170, right? Something in that range. Am I correct?
Yes, so we, three years ago, we were at 225. That was the highest we'd been in a while because of all of the funding that we received through COVID-19. So we were operating more programs, which we saw more people enrolled. And so around 225 this past year, we were at 179. So it ranges between, you know, usually 200 to 169, around there.
And do we have enough beds or shelter or hotel programs that we can house all 179 of them? Because if, I believe the law says if you can offer them housing, if you can provide housing, you can enforce the law. If you cannot provide housing, am I correct?
Councilmember Garbitian, that was the state of the law while Martin versus City of Boise was in effect. Johnson versus Grants Pass did away with that requirement. So now the city need not provide alternative shelter before it enforces its unlawful camping ordinance.
Okay. So if you are providing housing, what is the duration? Is it like for 10 days, two weeks? What is our ability to provide housing for? If you tell them, look, we can provide you housing, you can stay on the streets, you can camp on the streets. What is our ability? Is it for a week, two weeks, one month, 10 days? What is that number?
Sure. Councilmember Garbitian, that is difficult to answer, but I will say, actually, perfect segue into our housing inventory, it could take anywhere, the average length of stay actually now in our emergency shelter and our interim housing programs are about 250 days for clients to actually transition into a more stable and long-term housing program. So if we're looking at our local numbers, I think that we do have sufficient, somewhat sufficient, resources to help those who are unhoused in our community. But again, that's difficult to answer because we do get such an influx of transients and other clients that are coming to us from outside of our city. But currently, this is just our current bed inventory that I pulled. We have a total of 315 beds. This was actually pulled prior to our local Measure H budget being approved. Our budget actually went from $80,000 to about $300,000 for our hotel program. I can't tell you how many beds are available due to this increase, but in this past year, we served over 86 people through our hotel program here in Glendale. That's a significant jump from, you know, 45 beds to 86, you know, non-congregate, you know, hotel vouchers for our clients. We had, at the time when we pulled these numbers, we had 17, 77 beds available. We have the 45 beds at Ascencia, about 16 beds at the Y, and then the rest are through our Glendale Hotel program. So as clients are seeking services and shelter, that's when these vouchers get issued, and that's when we count the number of beds at that time. 38 beds are for our rapid rehousing program. We have about 156 beds secured for permanent housing programs. These 156 beds don't take into account our EHV program that we had where we were able to allocate around 225 housing vouchers for the unhoused. They also don't take into account the Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. Our clients are consistently pulled off of that list. And, you know, the housing department also works with our team, the continuum of care, to identify clients that are currently staying at the shelter to see if they're on their waiting list. And if that is the case, we do actually prioritize vouchers for those clients. We have about 44 beds for transitional housing programs, and this is specifically for DV families. So this is kind of what our housing inventory currently looks like, but I wanted to touch on the...
If we could go back, I do have a question on that, on the housing inventory.
Oops, am I going over here? What happened here?
Let me fix it for you.
Thank you.
There you go.
Okay. There we go.
Okay, yeah. When we do our homeless count, we're not counting the people that are in transitional housing, permanent housing, rapid rehousing, correct?
Yes and no. So we are counting the folks that are in our transitional housing program. Rapid rehousing and the permanent housing program, they're part of a separate report. It's called the housing inventory count. So we do report to HUD on those numbers, but it's not part of our PIT numbers. PIT numbers only include those in our emergency shelter programs and in our transitional housing programs or unhoused.
Or on the street.
On the streets.
Okay, and, okay. And the transitional housing, who's providing that? Is that Home Again L.A.?
Currently, Door of Hope provides transitional housing program for DV families, those who are actively fleeing DV. We actually fund them through state funds, but they're at about 44 beds currently. We're actually looking to see if we can expand the number of beds and services through this agency. Currently, though, they're at 44 beds.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Kusakian?
Thank you, and I apologize for my late arrival. We were in a meeting at the Metropolitan Water District. If this was answered, I apologize, but did we cover what the point of origin for most of the unhoused in Glendale are? How many of them are originating in here in Glendale and how many of them are coming from elsewhere?
Councilmember Kusakian, we did briefly touch on the, just where Glendale is located.
I was listening to the discussion on the drive over, so I heard the presentation, but I didn't really catch, I think you mentioned that in our area, there's 10,000 at least.
Spot two.
Spot two. But how many of the 170 or so that we have in Glendale are folks that are individuals from our community who've become homeless here in our city?
Councilmember Kusakian, I don't have that percentage at this time. However, we are starting to track that through our outreach efforts. We are currently working with our vendor through the homeless management information systems or software that we have in place. We will be updating our software or our program to be able to track that at the local level. At this time, I don't have those numbers for this year.
Mayor and staff, I would like us to take whatever effort is necessary to measure that, track that, because my concern is that, as we've seen in the news recently, we do have neighboring agencies that will take individuals and take them to other jurisdictions and leave them. You know, we are, you and your team are working very, very hard. I've worked with you personally with helping a number of individuals in cases. I know how difficult it is, but that job is not made, the work that you do is not made any easier when neighboring agencies are exasperating the problem, particularly as we have major global events coming up in the city of Los Angeles. My concern is that there's going to be a shuffling of humans to put them in places where they're out of the sight of the international media, and Glendale by proximity may be the unwitting recipient of some even more unhoused individuals. So I'd like to know... So I'd like to know right now how many we have, because I do know that we do a better job than some of our neighboring cities in helping those individuals. And then in terms of the court rulings that have come down, the decisions, the comments that have been made and declarations by our governor, most simply put, what is our ability or authority to determine the health and safety concerns of individuals who just accumulate objects, belongings, sometimes waste in a particular location where it becomes such that it makes the public walkways inaccessible to anyone? Not just residents, visitors, even other unhoused individuals? I mean, it is appropriating public spaces. And, you know, I understand that people may have substance abuse issues, they may have mental health issues that they're struggling with, but I don't think in any way does that excuse the appropriating of public spaces and creating a health nuisance. So what can we do to make sure that when someone is somewhere, that they are not creating an unhealthy, dangerous situation, that it is not causing a potential vector for disease and spreading of that disease?
Councilmember Kusakian, I think I will pass that over to Aaron.
Councilmember Kusakian, if I, if I understand the scope of the question is, what is the city's ability to, to determine for itself, to determine for ourselves, what behaviors or conduct threaten our public's health and safety? And the answer is, generally speaking, that the city can make and enforce all laws that regulate the public's health, safety, or welfare that are not in conflict with, with the laws of the state. In light of the decision in Grants Pass, unlawful camping is one additional tool that the city has at its disposal that it did not have between 2018 and 2023 without providing practically available shelter first. But we also have an obstruction ordinance, we have a storage and personal property ordinance, and there are numerous codes on the books currently that might apply to conduct whether by an unhoused person or by a housed person that threatens the health, safety, or welfare of the community at large.
Sure. And so, and if I was, if I heard you correctly on my drive over, Mr. Israel, is this camping, no camping ordinance specifically related to individuals with camping equipment? Do you have to have a tent versus if you just have, you know, you're, you know, sleeping on the ground? How is that, what is the difference there? What is the nuance?
So the, the camping ordinance as it is currently written proscribes conduct that includes placing and erecting temporary structures as well as sleeping on public property at night, making preparations to sleep at night. So they're not, they're not mutually exclusive. They both are encompassed within the definition of camp as it is currently codified in the municipal code.
And so if the city, the city has authority, if there is a situation that poses a danger to a neighborhood, let's say there's a home that has created a unhealthy environment, maybe they're storing toxic waste in their backyard, maybe there's hoarding of some sort that's going on that has spread outside of that property, the city has the ability and authority to enforce the law and clean up and force individuals to clean that area up, do they not?
As a general principle, yes, Councilmember Kusakian, and I think what you're talking about is, is prototypical nuisance activity, and that would be squarely within the city's jurisdiction. Of course, it would be determined on a case-by-case basis, but generally, yes.
And so do we, can we apply that same principle to someone who creates a similar situation in a public space?
Again, as a general principle, yes, and I would have to look back at the particular language of the code, but I am reasonably confident that, that the provisions that we are discussing today do define that conduct as a nuisance under the municipal code as it exists today. I would have to double-check the language.
All right, thanks.
I think the last, the last time you had brought forth the report, I had asked about Essencia and for us to look at the contract and for you guys to have a conversation. Where are we at with, with that portion?
Mr. Golanyan, would you like to respond?
Yeah, Mayor Sotia, as I recall, you had requested copies of the contract that we provided to you.
Right.
And you were going to-
Are you waiting for me?
Yes.
Okay, all right, then we'll set it up, but I thought staff was also going to be looking at possible alternatives, how we can fix the contract, what the issues are. Shouldn't be up to me to just look at the contract.
No, no, I, I agree, but the request, as we understood, was that you wanted to take a look at it, but we'll be more than happy to sit down with you and go over it and see if that generates any questions that we can clarify and perhaps need to modify with a new contract.
Okay, thank you. And I do know that when you did bring that report, based on the report and the information we received, I had raised some concerns about us providing funding but not getting the services based on the contract. I also recognize that after that meeting, some of my colleagues were approached by Essencia for requests for a meeting to clarify. And while I have always supported Essencia, I don't appreciate, just for the record, when I have concerns for those concerns not to be addressed with me and then go around my colleagues, to my colleagues, and request meetings with that, it's just disrespectful. So if we can set up a time with staff, I would love for us to, to review it. Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right, we have three cards on this.
There's still more of the presentation.
Would you guys like me?
Go ahead.
I could just briefly go through the rest. I know that if you guys have any questions or, I'll try to get through the rest really quickly. I wanted to provide you guys with the number of clients that we served. We, the latest numbers that we have, the data is from October 1st, 2022, 22nd to September 30th of 2023. This is our system performance measures that we submit to HUD. We did serve a total of 2,284 individuals in our continuum. About 1,337 were unduplicated, unsheltered homeless persons, and about 947 were enrolled in our programs. We just wanted to give you a number, just for you to understand the, the number of clients that we are serving year-round versus our PIT numbers just doesn't add up. And when our funding is based on our PIT numbers, it creates a big challenge for us because we just don't have the funding or resources to expand our programs. I'll just quickly go through this. I think I pretty much covered this in detail, and that's it. That just concludes my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any other questions that you have.
Just a quick comment. So based on our housing inventory, we have enough housing that, or beds, that if they are not service-resistant, we can, we can basically help all 79 people in Glendale that are homeless at this time, if they accept services and they cooperate?
Councilmember Garbadian, to answer your question, at this time, yes. You know, we do have funding. We just started the fiscal year, so we do have sufficient funding to be helped, to be able to help everyone. We actually do partner very closely, as Chief Sid mentioned, with the Glendale Police Department daily, and we do help clients get into a temporary shelter. The only area that we would probably need to look at is the permanent supportive housing piece, long-term housing programs, and also expanding our rapid rehousing program, which we are actively working on bringing in more funding and increasing the number of beds there. But to short answer is, at this time, yes.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
So we have three cards. I got a request from our downtown association to speak longer. Is Mr. Marco also a part of the group? Okay. So while I recognize you'd like more time, if I do that for you today, that requires me to do that for everybody moving forward, and I can't go down that road. And so, so if you guys want to combine the time, you will have six minutes total, but that's... I hope you understand.
Thank you, yes, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor, Council, appreciate the time, and we will combine, only if I go over, which I tend to do. What I want to talk to you about today is not just based in the anger of our business people, it's based in some fact as well. I was, it was necessary for me to get very involved on some homeless issues in the last two to three years and found that in almost every jurisdiction of Southern California, our homeless separate into three groups. One-third of the people who are actively hoping they can get a place to stay. One-third of the people who are either having mental challenges or drug abuse challenges, and one-third of the people who believe it is their God-given right to live wherever they want, however they want. That's a fact. You can check that fact with every jurisdiction in Southern California. That's why they're in Southern California. What I'm here appealing to you for today is equality. We try our best to give everybody equality, and we've really short shrifted the business people of Glendale. They do not get equal respect. For example, our employees at the Downtown Glendale Association are expected to do things that are not in any job description of our organization, which means clearing people off the sidewalk so a businessperson who is paying rent, paying taxes, and assessing themselves to be in the district can't get their customers in the doorway. They're expected to call the police when there's a homeless person shouting, screaming, yelling, and throwing things at people who are shopping in downtown Glendale and wanting to go into a business. But we've had complaints from businesspeople say, you know, we watch them and they just turn around and leave, meaning their customers. Our people are expected to clean up urination and excrement in front of businesses. It's not in their job title. That's not in their, they're not equipped for that, and yet we spend the money to do extra power washing and those types of things. That's clearly not equal. It's important for us all to realize that one of the engines of Glendale is the success of our small businesses, and anything that happens on a daily, weekly, or in some cases, an hourly basis impacts their ability to raise the funds they need to operate their business. Remember, our businesses are paying rent whether or not a homeless person is blocking their doorway. Our businesspeople are paying rent and taxes regardless if a customer can get into their store. So I think we need to be aware of that. Our police department is, also deserves a little bit of equality. They're trying to act when we call them, but when we call them, we're taking them away from what I would refer to as real crime. So that's one or two, less cops all of the citizens of Glendale have on the street because we're trying to get help with the homeless. Our district has tried very, very hard. We've even been a donor of district funds to Essencia, and unfortunately, it's just, it's not working. We need another approach. Throwing money at it is not the only solution because, as we've seen, take a look at what Councilman, Member Rattan Garpesian said about what percentage of the money we get from that latest tax. It's, it's really almost ridiculous. What we need to do is do what someone, the work, take the work that someone did for us. Grants Pass went to the Supreme Court, and they got some equality put in the law because before that, we had none. I want you to keep in mind that whatever you don't act on is a public invitation for the cities who care about their businesses to send their homeless here, because when Burbank and Pasadena and other businesses close to us enforce the law on behalf of their citizens, they come here because it's easier. So I'm asking you to please, please, help our police, help our businesspeople, and take a fair approach to fighting homeless. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Herbert Mulano? And do we have any additional cards or callers?
Madam Mayor, I do not have any callers or cards for this item.
Right, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sotia. Members of the City Council, my name is Herbert Mulano. As you can see, the problem of homelessness is probably much more extensive and much more expensive than you imagine. The, the amount of the budget that must go to the police department, the fire department, picking up individuals who become sick, taken to the hospital, is pretty significant. And I believe that there's also another layer of it that impacts the rest of the community. I would like to address a part of the homeless problem that oftentimes is not addressed, which is where do they come from and what was the situation of the homeless before they became homeless? And last year, there was a study by the University of California in San Francisco. It's called the Binning of Homeless Housing Initiative, where they interviewed 3,200 homeless throughout California. Thirty-one percent of them had mental illness, 24% of them had chronic substance abuse, 16% were victims of domestic violence. And so as a housing provider, my experience has been something along the following lines. An individual who becomes addicted legally or not to certain substances would very likely wind up without a job. In other words, they start failing to come to work, their job performances start declining, they lose their job, and they eventually do not have the money to pay rent. And then it becomes the burden now of the rental or the apartment owner to now provide a way of basically figuring out how to evict this individual that cannot pay the rent. And oftentimes, it's months of work, and I've had some friends where they spent over $100,000 to just to get rid of one troubled individual, who were able to actually played the legal system. So it's a huge problem for us. They eventually wind up with a friend. And in their study, they found that in the last six months prior to their becoming homeless, 50% of those individuals were not renters and were not owning a home. They were living with a relative or a friend. They were not paying rent, they were not paying a mortgage, 50%. So what does the city, what should the city do in order to collect the proper information to figure out how to prevent additional homeless? So we have two problems. The problem of the current homeless individuals and what to do about them, and then the incoming individuals who are coming in either from prison, or they are coming in from other jurisdictions, or as a result of, of the addiction. So the problem, for example, of fentanyl extends wide throughout our community. So it is my suggestion that the city appropriate funds for a more thorough and more study, either from the rent corporation or to be applied in the month of January when the major study is done once a year. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, do my colleagues have, let's just go into comments unless staff has additional information they want to share? Would like to go first?
Madam Mayor, I can go first if you want.
Go ahead, Councilmember Kusakian.
So my, my desire is to see us as a city do whatever we need to do to make the public spaces that have been encroached upon accessible and safe for all of our residents. The homelessness crisis, which we've spoken about at length, both during this meeting and other meetings, is a regional crisis, and it's not one to be taken lightly. But I would say that the, it is not the fault of the city of Glendale. It certainly is in terms of how much money the county spends or collects and returns to us, which we've spoken about time and again, as well as the state. It is a complete dereliction of their fundamental duty of being able to provide for the citizenry and the residents of this state. We can do all that we can, but with no more resources coming our way, we will eventually hit a wall. And the answer to the issue isn't to throw our arms open wide and say, just please give me your tired, your huddled masses yearning to be free. We cannot afford to do that. It is an extremely large burden on the, on the city. So what I would like us now to do is to have staff show us some ways to enforce the laws that we have on the books and to make, again, as I said, our open spaces, our sidewalks, safe and accessible. So- So however we do that, I'm open to suggestions. I am not, obviously, a legal expert to determine what we can do, but I want to hear from staff what our options are.
Councilmember Kasakhian, you noted whatever we have in the books, but whatever we have in the books, we would need to alter if we're talking about what you're recommending. So you're open to the recommendation to... Or you're making a recommendation to change, correct? Councilmember Najarian.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. And we did get into a larger discussion of the homelessness and the services that we provide. But I think the important thing here is the decision that we had in Grants Pass, and that is a pretty much a game changer for cities across the country. And much like the concerns of Mr. Kasakhian, I do believe that we need to begin the enforcement of our current ordinance and consider taking it a step further to the daytime camping issue that was raised. We will then find out exactly how much help we're going to need in the housing, in the, you know, the Essentias, the YMCA's, and perhaps the mental health field. And perhaps we'll get a new... Hopefully, a new funding source to help with that. I know the police department isn't happy about that. I wouldn't be happy. In many regards, you know, we were talking about the equality. I think Mr. ...
Lemo.
Lemo. Mr. Lemo. I didn't recognize him without his, you know, his usual suit and tie, so... That he was talking about, it isn't fair to our Downtown Glendale ambassadors that are doing the work, but this is the way we should go on. And I believe that this sentiment of stricter enforcement, stricter... In a sense, there's education involved, too, to these folks on the streets as to what they can and cannot do should be pursued. And I think that's a general direction. We're here to give general direction to staff, and that's pretty much where I would suggest we go.
Who's next?
I can.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you for the report to both of you. And, you know, yeah, we're kind of talking big picture about homelessness, which is a complex issue that comes to us from time to time. And we know it's many-layered. There are a lot of factors, including substance abuse, including mental health, including domestic violence, and including economics, the cost of housing. And so I think there's unfairness in abundance to go around, right? Nobody really, I think, chooses to be homeless if they have an alternative. Anyway, I, you know, I think it's a matter of striking a balance, and I think we can do that well here. I think our police department is fully capable of striking the balance between, you know, not being cruel. On the other hand, creating some level of disincentive, of discouragement, for people to maybe take the easier path, which may be to resist our services. And by, you know, not being able to sleep on the street, you know, perhaps there will be some who will, at that point, say, you know, "I'd rather not be woken up three times during the night. I'd rather not have to, you know, march all the way over to LA where maybe I can get away with it. Perhaps I'll consider a hotel voucher. Perhaps I'll consider some other service." So I think we need to balance that and maybe shift the balance a little bit towards that, kind of creating those disincentives. So I, you know, this new court decision does give us more tools, and I do support extending our ordinance to daytime hours to give GP Glendale Police Department the tools they need. And I'm confident that they will exercise those tools, you know, carefully on a case-by-case basis, being, you know, humane and doing things just the way they've always done them. So I think I'm confident we won't be picking up people and dropping them in LA, and I'm confident we won't be just moving people from place to place and being cruel and, you know, as far as trashing people's belongings and things like that. Those are the things, obviously, we want to avoid, and I know we will. So I'm confident, kind of making those additional set of tools available.
Great. Councilmember Garpetian?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with my colleagues. I think Mr. Lemo hit it on the nail. Throwing money at it will not solve the issue. The state spent $25 billion, $25 billion, and this issue hasn't gone away, or even not even half. They didn't put a dent in it. So it's not just the issue. I think we... I agree with my colleagues that we need to enforce our laws, extend it to daytime enforcing as well, and make sure that people know that, like any other resident of Glendale, we have to abide by the same laws and follow the same laws. We are a very welcoming city. Glendale is a very diverse city, but we don't want to be a magnet for, you know, people move here from other cities because they're enforcing the law. So it's a sensitive issue. I think there are a lot of homelessness. One of the reasons of people becoming homeless is not just a substance abuse, it's also family issues. A lot of people go away from their families. They run away. They end up in another state, and they have nobody, they have no jobs, and they then they become homeless. Then they become addictive to substances. So there is no magic wand that we can move right now and come up with a solution, but I think enforcing our laws is number one. And we also have... That's why I asked the question, if we have enough housing inventory to take care of the homeless population in Glendale, and we do that, we do have that at this time. So with that, I am okay with extending the enforcement as well as the new laws and just try to keep Glendale the safe city that it is.
So for me, this is... We're going to break this up into two parts. One is the policy portion, and then the other, as it relates to the staff's report from homeless services as well as PD. As it pertains to the policy, I do want us to extend to daytime. I think I'd like to see that policy be as stringent but remain humane. And so how you balance those two things out. But I think there is something to be said about making sure that whether it's our parks or our streets, even our alleyways, that when people are walking in the city, they feel safe. Just last week, we were one of four cities, again, all over the nation that made it list... Four out of California that made it to the list of safest cities in the nation. And so I want to make sure that we're retaining that kind of level of service for our residents. But I think the policy part also needs to play a role with the services that we're Councilmember Brotman, I know you mentioned some people, you know, no one really chooses, but I have to disagree with that because there are people that choose that lifestyle. There are people that, aside from mental health, if you put aside mental health and substance abuse issues... There was actually a great study done in Colorado a couple of years ago by a journalist. It was an investigative study that followed unhoused individuals. And while she didn't want to come to that conclusion, there was a whole group of people that preferred not to have responsibilities, not to have bills, not to... And they preferred that kind of lifestyle. And so some people do choose that. But I do think that I'm extremely concerned about the lack of mental health and substance abuse services. And so what I'd like to see is some sort of report from staff on things we could be doing as a city. I think it'd also be helpful for us to schedule a meeting with Supervisor Barker and any of the mental health services that we don't have access to right now, and for us to, you know, advocate for our city. Sometimes it works out that, you know, staff to staff, we're able to get what we need. And then at other times, it requires us to elevate that to the council and myself. I'll make myself available for that as well. But we're not going to get it if we don't ask, and we need to be having these conversations on a higher level. So I'd like to see something come back from staff on, you know, here are some things that are available that we can't seem to tap into. Here are things that we could be advocating for that we haven't gotten in the past. Or here are some ways that we can also institute some local programs that other cities have and what that would look like. If that's enough direction from me? Yes. Okay. So it seems like we're all on the same page.
Yeah, I was going to say, Madam Mayor, it sounds like we're hearing loud and clear, obviously, to enforce what's on the books now. And if we can get a motion to direct staff to prepare an amendment to the ordinance to address daytime camping.
So I'm moved.
Could I ask that the motion include my comments for the additional report? To get the additional... Yeah, the additional report from staff for the mental health and substance abuse.
Madam Mayor, if you'd like to add this to a new business agenda for discussion, if you want a standalone, separate report.
I'm just looking for a report. I'm not looking for an agenda item at this point.
For that reason, Madam Mayor, I would just direct... I would make it simple for staff and direct them on this particular item, which has been very clearly stated, and then make that a separate item. Not that I'm in disagreement with it, but I don't want to mix the two issues, even though they may be related.
Okay. Do you want me to do that now? I mean, okay, so I requested a report from staff, but it's not part of the motion.
I would second that request then when the time comes.
May we have roll call?
Councilwoman Brotman?
Yes.
Garpetian?
Yes.
Kasakhian?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Mayor Asadrian?
Yes. Thank you. All right. We're going back to number one.
Item one, a city attorney regarding update on sidewalk vending regulations and enforcement efforts. A motion providing direction to staff. Madam Mayor, I do have seven cards for this.
Madam Mayor, the second item, Aaron Israel is going to provide an overview on that as well. Obviously, we want to take this opportunity to go over sidewalk vending, what the state law is, what our local regulations are, our enforcement efforts, some of those challenges, which I know you've heard from constituents, some of those folks who are here today, and then get feedback and direction from council. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Aaron to provide the overview.
Madam Mayor, members of council, again, Aaron Israel, Assistant Assistant City Attorney. Going to begin my presentation today with the legal framework that governs local regulations on sidewalk vending as of 2019. In 2018, the California State Legislature adopted Senate Bill 946, which it dubbed the Safe Sidewalk Vending Act. It took effect January 1st of 2019, and in a nutshell, it decriminalizes violations of local sidewalk vending regulations, and it states that a local program to regulate sidewalk vendors must comply with its requirements and restrictions. SB 946 permits municipalities to regulate the time, place, and manner of sidewalk vending in such a way as it is directly related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. A few examples provided in the statute itself, limited hours of operation that are not unduly restrictive, maintenance of sanitary conditions, and compliance with the ADA and other disability access standards. By contrast, the statute expressly states that community animus or economic competition cannot be a basis for a local regulation as it is not an objective health, safety, or welfare concern. And what this means is that disapproval of vending from within the community or competition that vending poses to brick-and-mortar establishments cannot be a basis for a requirement or a restriction in a municipal code. Additionally, municipalities may prohibit stationary sidewalk vending in areas owned exclusively residential, sidewalk vending in the immediate vicinity of an area designated for use by a special permit, such as a special event permit in our city, sidewalk vending in the immediate vicinity of a permitted certified farmer's market or swap meet. Senate Bill 946 allows local agencies to require a sidewalk vending permit, but it cannot require a social security number as a condition of issuing such a permit. A local authority can require a Department of Tax and Fee Administration seller's permit. It can require additional licenses to the extent required by law, such as a license or permit from the County Department of Public Health. It can insist upon compliance with generally applicable laws, and as a condition of issuing a permit can require sidewalk vendors to submit information regarding their operations. Now, what a local authority cannot do. A local authority cannot require sidewalk vendors to operate within specific parts of the public right-of-way. And the slide says, "except as specified." And what that means in each of the instances is unless related to an objective health, safety, or welfare concern. So with respect to operation in parts of the public right-of-way, a municipality could require a sidewalk vendor to operate within a specific part of the public right-of-way if directly related to an objective health, safety, or welfare concern. Local agencies may not require sidewalk vendors to obtain a non-governmental entity or individual's approval or consent, operate only in a designated neighborhood or area, and may not prohibit a sidewalk vendor from operating in a park, or restrict the number of sidewalk vendors permitted to operate within the jurisdiction, again, unless related to objective health, safety, or welfare concerns. Senate Bill 946 states that violations of a local permit are punishable only by administrative fines. Failure to pay a fine is not punishable as an infraction or a misdemeanor. A violation of a regulation, that means violating a condition of a local permit, is punishable by $100 upon the first instance, $200 on the second, $500 on the third, and on the fourth or a subsequent instance, a municipality can rescind the vending permit. Failure to obtain a vending permit in the first instance is alternatively punishable by higher fines in the amount of $250, $500, or $1,000. However, the statute requires the municipality to reduce those fines to the lower amounts if the seller subsequently obtains a permit. Vendors are also entitled to an ability to pay determination. Qualifying vendors are entitled to an 80% reduction in their fines. Qualifying vendors, just for clarity, are those who receive certain kinds of public assistance and those who are within a certain percentage of the poverty line. Turning to our local ordinance, Glendale Municipal Code, Chapter 5.20, does require an annual license for operating as a sidewalk vendor within the city. A separate license is required for each vending receptacle. A valid California sales tax number is required. A background check is required, and a permit can be denied, suspended, or revoked based upon certain criminal activity. For vendors who are dispensing food, an LA County Department of Public Health approval is required, and as a condition of issuing a permit, vendors are required to indemnify the city. Under the municipal code, a sidewalk means a public sidewalk or a paved pedestrian path. It does not include alleys, plazas, or city-owned parking lots or structures. Sidewalk vendor means a person who sells food or merchandise from a pushcart stand. You can see the list here, but the point to emphasize is that it applies to non-motorized As authorized under 946, the municipal code does impose time restrictions that are not unduly restrictive. Sidewalk vending is permitted between dawn and dusk in exclusively residential areas. in exclusively residential areas by roaming vendors. Exclusively residential means all single and multifamily zones. In non-residential zones, vending is prohibited between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 in the morning. And in parks, vending is permitted from the time the park opens until one hour before it closes. The municipal code does currently establish safety and sanitary regulations. Vendors are not permitted to use explosive or hazardous materials, with the exception of propane. They must maintain trash containers and not use public trash cans. And they must immediately clean food, grease, or other fluid or items that fall onto public property. They're limited in size. Receptacles can measure no greater than six feet in length by four feet in width. And roaming vendors must maintain an unobstructed view over four feet in height. They're permitted to operate on sidewalks that are at least 10 feet wide, leaving five feet unobstructed for pedestrian travel. In residential zones, roaming vendors must maintain four feet of unobstructed width for pedestrian travel, and they must comply with applicable disability access standards. Stationary sidewalk vendors are prohibited in exclusively residential zones, as I mentioned before. Sidewalk vendors are also prohibited in the city's Arts and Entertainment District, the Alex Theater District, on portions of Brandon Central, in the Montrose Shopping Park area, in Kenneth Village, and in the Adams Square Commercial Area. I apologize, I was one slide behind. Additionally, vending is not permitted within the immediate vicinity, as I stated earlier, of a farmer's market, swap meet, or area designated by a special event permit, within 200 feet of a police station, fire station, hospital, or school while it's open, within 15 feet of a bus bench, stop, or shelter, street corner, pedestrian crosswalk, driveway, or alley approach. Additionally, vending is not permitted by one vendor within 100 feet of another, within 15 feet of an entrance to a business during the hours that it is open to the public, within three feet of any display window of any such building in such a manner as to impede or interfere with the reasonable use of that facility. Stationary vendors are prohibited from vending in parks if the city has an exclusive concessionaire agreement for vending in that park. Otherwise, vendors must stay on sidewalks or pedestrian pathways. In those parks, vending is prohibited within 50 feet of any field, court, playground, pool, or exercise area while it's in use. Turning to licensing and enforcement activity. As of October 2023, the Glendale Police Department Education Detail informed all sidewalk vendors of local laws. As of January 2024, GPD had warned all sidewalk vendors operating in the city about selling meats without permits, and informed vendors of increased activity by the County Department of Public Health in Glendale. And I should note here that the Department of Public Health and city teams have conducted joint inspections, and that DPH has confiscated food for violation of county regulations. However, city staff is informed that confiscated food can be very quickly replaced after being confiscated. Turning to our sidewalk vendor permit requirement. 61 sidewalk vendor licenses have been issued to 19 different businesses since 2012. However, as of last week, only five licenses are active. State of enforcement. Enforcement, as we use it in this presentation, means when a fine is issued or food is confiscated by the Department of Public Health. In December of 2023, six vendors were inspected, and GPD took enforcement action against five. Year-to-date, 41 locations have been inspected, and GPD took enforcement action against 15. Four were issued citations for violation of Glendale Municipal Code Section 5.35.080, but I believe that that section had been recodified. So that it's still the vending prohibition, but that restriction, I believe, is now in 5.20. The locations that are on your screen right now are those identified by staff as having received multiple complaints, a violative activity. 1164 Galleria Way is on Central between Colorado and Broadway. 103 East Glen Oaks, outside of Trader Joe's. 311 Los Feliz Road, outside of Vaughn's. 215 North Brand Boulevard, North Wilson. 503 West Kenneth, at the Kenneth and Pacific intersection, and 620 South Glendale Avenue on the intersection of Glendale and Maple. As you know, staff is seeking the council's direction in the motion attached to the agenda. Some additional options that the council may consider, reduction in license fees to incentivize participation. I understand that the first issuance is $400, and for renewal, approximately $270, additional outreach or education. And note that other jurisdictions have codified provisions in their sidewalk vending ordinances that provide for the impoundment of vending equipment. That concludes my presentation. Happy to take any questions that you may have. Additionally, our Community Development Department and Police Department teams are here to answer any questions that you may have of them.
And if I could, I'm not sure the pro temp is, but the, as noted, you know, and Police Department personnel could certainly explain this as well. Sometimes when we do go out in force and we talk to folks there, we'll cooperate in whether it's providing an ID or accepting administrative citation. Other folks do not necessarily, and because there's a lack of a criminal remedy, that is part of the problem that you're seeing with the enforcement. I think you're all aware of this. You've probably been told by folks as well that are out there, but I just wanted to make sure that that was kind of expressly understood. That is probably one of the primary challenges, which is the decriminalization of our ability to make this a criminal violation in the event that all the civil remedies do not work. And so we're certainly open to any further comment there. But one option is the impoundment of equipment. And in addition, as Aaron noted, the county is confiscating food when they find that a vendor does not have an appropriate health permit.
So I have a question about how these folks. So if you're a brick-and-mortar restaurant, and you're preparing food, and you do not have the proper refrigeration equipment, my assumption, because I'm not in that business, but speaking to people who are, in terms of public health and safety, they will come in, you will be cited, that infamous letter grade that, you know, the blue A gets dropped down to a C or whatever. How are these folks who are preparing foods in these public spaces able to even comply with that when, you know, you leave meat out for just a few minutes extra, and someone from the Health Department will cite you immediately?
Councilmember Kusakian, it's a good question. And the answer is that the County Department of Public Health does have regulations governing sanitary conditions, food preparation conditions as to sidewalk vendors. And the County Department of Public Health is responsible for enforcing those conditions. So separately from the city, vendors do have to obtain permissions from the County Department of Public Health to operate. And if they're in violation or they don't obtain those permissions, then they're subject to enforcement activity, which in the case of food includes confiscation.
And you may be, you may not be the expert on this. Perhaps someone from County Health, I'd be interested to know what their response is. And does storage of food in a cooler constitute an adequate safety measure for the public?
I don't have an answer to that question, but I'd be happy to report back to you.
Okay, because it certainly seems like there's an incredible chasm in terms of the double standard for brick-and-mortar establishments and some of these sidewalk vendors. You know, I don't know how, I mean, this county may have these standards in place, but I have yet to see it enforced anywhere. That's one of my primary concerns, is a public health and safety concern, and how there's a double standard for individuals who have establishments and individuals who have these temporary pop-up places. So I would like to understand that better at some point.
I think it's not a matter of just what's on the books and what's allowed. But from time to time, when I've asked about this issue, for me, it's about our restaurants having to go through an extensive process to be able to get permitting. The investment they make, the overhead that they have. And then you have a pop-up that comes up right in front of it. Every time I've inquired from staff, it's been not just, oh, you know, we can enforce, but I've also been told that they can refuse to provide ID. They can, you know, they can refuse to comply with that enforcement. So can you walk us through what our options are? Because this really is, and again, I'm somebody that loves street food, all for it, when it's done in a manner that doesn't affect other small businesses that have that overhead that is, you know, is complying with LA County Health to make sure our people aren't getting sick. But I'm interested in the practicality of the things that we can enforce and what's actually happening on the ground, and clarify what our options are with respect to, you know, even the ID and the license request.
Sure, Mayor Asatrian. I'll take the ID piece first, and then I'll defer to our Neighborhood Services and Police Departments to answer your question about what's, questions about what's happening on the ground. As City Attorney Garcia mentioned at the conclusion of my remarks, under California law, a peace officer can demand ID when they have reasonable suspicion of criminal activity. What SB 946 did is it prevented the imposition of a criminal penalty for violation of a local sidewalk regulation. So without that suspicion of criminal activity, unless there's some other violative conduct that a vendor is engaged in, violation of a sidewalk vending ordinance alone would not provide an officer a basis to compel someone to produce their ID. And I could only speculate.
I understand what's in the books. I don't need an explanation for that. I'm asking, is there something that we can put in our books that helps with the practicality of things? I'm not misinformed on what's allowed and not allowed. I'm asking for some solutions here.
I apologize, Mayor Asatrian. I thought you were asking for the impetus for the refusal. That was the basis for my question. As I noted at the conclusion of my presentation, we kind of have two different, perhaps parallel paths that we presented as examples of direction that the council could give. One is an incentive piece, an education incentive piece, and the other is an enforcement piece. As I noted, some other jurisdictions have codified provisions that authorize the impoundment for violation of their sidewalk vending permits for operating without a permit or for creating some other public safety, some other public health or safety standard. One of the other things that we can explore is whether and to what extent we could take some enforcement action for failing to cooperate with a city official in the performance of their duties. That wasn't one of the options listed on the slide in the presentation. But if that's the direction that the council wants to give, we will certainly take that back and explore a lot further.
And I know that one of your slides was talking about the state law that allows for, you know, it has to be like 15 feet or three feet from a door. Are we allowed to codify something that is specific to, like, it can't be in front of another, like, there can't be a taco stand in front of a taco restaurant?
So Mayor Asatrian, as I noted earlier, economic competition is expressly precluded as a reason for codifying a regulation. So the basis that we would need for any additional restrictions that the council asked us to explore would have to be directly related to an objective health, safety, or welfare concern, and the statute precludes economic competition as one of those reasons. And a court could very well perceive a restriction that codifies, to take your example, a mobile vendor dispensing in the same wares or food as an adjoining or an adjacent business as being based on economic competition.
Okay, it looks like Councilmember Garpetian had a question, and then Councilmember Kusakian.
Okay, I think this is one of the others, another law that was passed through state that is too one-sided under the name of creating more entrepreneurship. They created an unfair competition, an unfair advantage to very few people. So as far as the Health Department and the permits that they obtain as to how to handle food, how would the Health Department enforce that? Because they don't even know where they are. They can move around. One day they're in Glendale for a week or two, and then they can move to another city. It's very difficult to find the vendors and enforce these laws. Also, are our ordinance, you know, indicated that they have to obtain permit and display the permit so we would know who they are in general? If they don't provide an ID, I don't know they're doing it or not. Also, they have these diesel generators that they use. Their cooking facilities are all gas. There's a lot of talk about electrification and going all-electric. And we're forcing our, you know, if the Ninth Circuit Code didn't vote against it, we had to, all the new restaurants, they were supposed to go all-electric, and diesel generators, and the way they're disposed or they wash their equipment, or how does it, how in the world they manage that, that wastewater, where does it go? It goes to the storm drain and ends up in the ocean. Outdoor sitting, some of them, they have outdoor sitting now. And they have A-frame menus on the sidewalk. And what happened to the ADA issues? I mean, many of them, when you drive by, you can't even walk around it, let alone having ADA issues. And also, there are just open air, there's no hood. You want to do a restaurant, a bakery, good luck. It's gonna take a year, and it's gonna take a few hundred thousand dollars to install that hood. And you're sitting out there, and all this smoke goes up in the air, and there is no pushback from anybody against all this, you know, environmental concerns about these facilities. I think we need to enforce the laws that we have and see what comes back. And also, as far as confiscating food, maybe the equipment as well. They have to follow some rules in any city. It's really difficult to just say, okay, they can be anywhere they want. And in residential neighborhoods, my understanding was that they could only be mobile. They can't be a stationary facilities. And I see they're there all day long. I mean, they put it on the corner, whatever it is that's being sold. They come in in the morning at 10:00, 10:30, 11:00, and they leave at 6:00 or 7:00. It's dusted on, basically. I don't know how would that work. And one other thing I want to mention is, that goes along with all of this, is street performances, amplified music. That is very difficult to deal with. Like, we were in Frida's one night. There was this gentleman right in, Frida's is a Mexican restaurant. They have this nice mellow music in there. They prepare some of the food in front of you. And there was this gentleman, was a violinist, in front, right? Almost eight feet away from the entrance with a big amplified, you know, music system. And he was playing, he was playing beautifully. He was a good violinist, but it was disturbing with people who didn't want to listen to that music at that time, in that location. I think that's something that we need to look into as far as the street performances go within this ordinance, basically. So that's all I have. And also, you mentioned in your presentation that we have only five licenses right now, five people who have licenses?
That is my understanding, yes, Councilmember Garpetian. But I would defer to Neighborhood Services for any additional information you might have regarding the status of licenses.
And within that same presentation, it says 41 locations were checked. So how's, so that tells me that either there are same people that have multiple locations, or they're not obtaining any licenses. And the other question is, is every license is per location? Or you can obtain one license and have multiple locations? and have multiple locations?
The former, Councilmember Garpetian. You would need a license for each loca, a permit for each location.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now.
Councilmember Kasakian?
Sure. So let me just say a few things. One of the issues that Councilmember Garpetian brought up, I actually have some photos of I'd like to show. Mr. Jimian, can I just bring this up? So we've had a lot of discussion about how the sidewalks, the roads, they belong to everyone, trying to make spaces for bicyclists and pedestrians alike, et cetera. So this is just one example of one of these vendors, and you look at that if, and I have the shot zoomed in. So you see an A-frame, they sure, they have their trash can, but obviously they have their propane as well. If we can go to the next photo and then zoom in a little bit more, if there's a third photo, is it, there you go. Go back to the one prior to that and look at that. I mean, how does someone get around, if you're in a wheelchair, if you're on a bicycle, if you are just trying to walk from one point of that sidewalk to the other and you do not wish to walk through a restaurant, how do you do that? I think it is a fair, and I believe, you know, given that we're a charter city, a constitutionally defensible position to say that we want to reclaim those public spaces that we pay for, that the city pays for. Today, it's food. By the way, I, I understand the concerns about competition to brick and mortars, but I think you have made the, the law, stated what the law clearly says can be the issues upon which we can enforce violations or, or behavior, encourage appropriate behavior and what we can't. I will say that whatever Sacramento was thinking when they cooked this up, pun intended, they, I don't think, understand the impacts they will have on the sources of tax revenue that local jurisdictions and, and many jurisdictions rely on. Today, it's food, it may be shawarmas and tacos and whatever else, you know, I've seen pomegranate juice, watermelons out of the back of a truck. Tomorrow, it will be clothing right across from, you know, apparel stores in the Galleria. What's to stop that, right? Or, or mobile medical exams. It's just, it seems that, you know, all reason has been lost. And again, if you want to do it, that's fine. Come to an agreement with someone who has a private property that has a parking lot that is not in use, find the hours where it works for you, and operate. But in the meantime, I want to ask the following questions. We can charge for the cost of the cleanup and the maintenance of the sidewalk where these people operate?
I think the answer to your question, Councilmember Kasakian, is if they are causing damage to public property, if a vendor is causing damage to public property and not, and not cleaning up, whether it be trash or grease or whatever, the, the remedy for the city is to issue an administrative fine, which comes back into the city's treasury by statute. I think that that would be the, the mechanism.
But if they are operating by state law, and we are going to issue a permit to the operator, can we not calculate into the cost of that permit what it costs the city to maintain those sidewalks?
Councilmember, the, the statute is clear on its face that the, the violations are punishable only by administrative fines, and those administrative fines are capped. They are capped by statute.
But I'm not talking, Mr. Israel, I want to talk about punishment. I, I want to talk about allowing, let's say, for them to operate with a permit. They need to apply to the city to have a permit to operate. Can we do that? Can we require operation with a permit?
Of course, Councilmember.
Thank you. And, and in doing so, can we include in the cost of that permit what the cost of maintaining and cleaning those sidewalks is?
I think that we can recover our costs, and I think we can incorporate actual costs in our permit, yes.
Perfect. All right, excellent, excellent. I like that.
I just want to add to that, if I could, Councilmember Kasakian. So our, and this, we're here in Liza Road, right? We have in our process now a permit process that requires them to maintain and keep that clean. So to the, and to the extent that we would be able to actually enforce that, then that would be less of an issue. We would, we would have to probably do a little bit more research to make sure that's something we could actually impose above and beyond our, our normal cost of processing a permit. But if that's the direction council wants to provide us, after you've had your discussion, we'd be happy to look at it.
Okay. I, I would like to revisit that. And in terms of the permit fees, what do we, what is the formula by which we assess that amount, Mr. Garcia or Mr. Galanian? I know that we just went through a whole discussion about our permits.
It was the cost of our staff time to process the permit, essentially.
Okay.
And so it's, my understanding is $400 for the, the permit and then $276 to renew it on an annual basis.
So in other jurisdictions where, and I promise I'll wrap up and I won't monopolize the entire time, Adamir, but in other jurisdictions where there are cities that allow cannabis licenses for cannabis operations, they, and it's commonly known among cities and officials who talk to each other, that some cities will charge very large application fees for these businesses, knowing that, and part of the argument made for the allowance of cannabis was that it will help a lot of cities that are having financial woes, and some of these fees for just applying, whether it's application fee or the license, and I don't know the difference between which, but they are charging tens of thousands of dollars to these operators. Why are jurisdictions able to do it in that instance and not in others?
Councilmember Kasakian, so generally, you can only recover your costs for that permit. So I, not, not being, given that we don't have cannabis businesses in Glendale, I'm not knowledgeable as to what the additional costs associated with that, although I can imagine what they might be. And so there's probably, that's probably where there's some cost differential as opposed to what we have here. But again, we're happy to go back and look at our costs to determine if there are additional costs that we can be absorbed into the fee.
And I would like to know, you know, for cities like, I know West Hollywood and others that have allowed it, how they have been able to charge fees that, and, and amounts that well exceed, I think, what probably staff time is. And by the way, I will lastly say before I, I cede the microphone, that I am absolutely for confiscation of equipment for those who violate the laws that we have on the books and who are not being responsible. Thank you.
Before, go on, I, I do have a question for Councilmember Kasakian, and I guess Councilmember Garpetian, because you've already made points on this, but are you, are you interested in not seeing these just across the board in our city? Or are you looking for something that safeguards our restaurants? Because those are two different-
Well, in terms of safeguarding our restaurants, if I'm correct in what you said, Mr. Israel, the competition that they pose to restaurants is not something we can take into consideration in determining our policies. Is that correct?
Generally, yes.
So I am looking at how, like you, if they want to operate on private property, in Portland, they have these pods, which are parking lots, and a number of food vendors can come and operate in a circle, or there's a 626 night market that happens in San Gabriel Valley. I am fine with that. What I am not fine with is the absolute bedlam and chaos of vendors all over the city selling all sorts of things, whether it be produce from the back of a pickup truck on the side of the street, or taking up the sidewalk and not allowing free access to people trying to get from one endpoint in the city to another.
Okay. Councilmember Garpetian, and then Councilmember Brotman.
This, when this ordinance came before us, I think it was six, seven years ago, I voted against it because I didn't want side of vending industry, because I knew this was going to happen. And with that photo that Councilmember Kasakian displayed, right now, right behind that A-frame, there is, there are tables and chairs, and also there's another vendor right next to you. So there are two vendors right now. I saw it like a few nights ago, and there, there, there's a sitting area in between, and I don't know if the state law allows sitting, sitting, outdoor seating areas as well, or, and the lighting they have, they have just all this, who's going to regulate the, you know, you want to change your light switch in your house, you have to get a permit. But they have lightings and everything with different cables, and they're all connected by, you know, some sort of an electric tape and what have you. I think, I personally, I don't, I don't want to see street vending anywhere in the city. I don't know if I'm in the majority or not. When it came to ours, I voted against it. I think it's an unfair competition. I think there's not, not enough regulations, and there are other stories behind it that it's not time for it today. But I don't think it's safe. I don't think it's environmentally friendly. I don't think it's, you know, it's, if they serve food, I don't think it's good food anyways. But I agree with many of the things that Councilmember Kasakian mentioned as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yeah, I wanted to come back to this issue of blocking of sidewalks. That's the thing I was thinking about the most. So you said, you said we have rules about five feet in a commercial district, I think you said, four feet in a residential?
That's, that's correct, Councilmember Brotman.
What is, so, and that complies with ADA? That would allow somebody in a wheelchair to get through?
That is my understanding as we sit here, yes, Councilmember Brotman.
Okay, but we have those numbers, so those are, those are kind of the numbers that we, we're, we're working with then, right?
Correct.
So in this case, it looks like, I can't really tell, but I doubt that there's that kind of clearance, right? Especially with the A-frame and then the, the pole and everything. So what do we do, practically speaking, if, if, you know, we see this, we know that somebody, you know, a pedestrian really can't get through, especially if they have a wheelchair? Like, what can we do here?
And Councilmember Brotman, if you're, if you're asking what our approach is on the ground, I would defer to our enforcement authorities for that. What the, what the statute allows us to do punitively is to impose an administrative fine.
So, yeah, that was- So I, actually, it's good, I'll ask, so both. So you're saying, as far as our legal authorities go, we cannot say, you know, this is a hazard, this is, you're blocking the, the public right of way, you need to move now, and if they say no, there's nothing we can do except issue them a citation?
If I understand the, the question correctly, we can say that it's a hazard. Certainly, we can do that. And we can ask them to move, and if we don't, the enforcement action that together, 946 and Chapter 5.20 authorizes the administrative fine, that we, we essentially issue a monetary penalty for non-compliance.
And presumably, if this behavior that continues, we could revoke their license, assuming they have-
Assuming they have one, correct.
But if somebody were, if somebody just parked a car in, in, in the travel lane on Glen Oaks Boulevard and just left it there, it's blocking the flow of traffic, and the police pull up, say you can't be here, they can arrest them, right?
There is a specific, in that context, Councilmember Brotman, there is a specific state statute that says you cannot obstruct or abandon a, a travel lane. So there, there is authority provided in the California Vehicle Code that would authorize a towing in that instance.
Okay, but we don't have that same kind of authority if it's a sidewalk to tow, quote unquote?
Councilmember Brotman, if I can-
Sure.
-add in, thank you for the opportunity. What Erin had alluded to earlier is that the, the state had taken away our ability to, for the vehicle code, you know, officers can arrest. With, with the sidewalk vending, we are completely limited to administrative citations. Instances like this, we have those rules. This is not a permitted location. The tent is not permitted, the lighting is not permitted, nothing about this situation is permitted. So we already have those rules. The ordinance is robust. We already have all of those instances that are outlined that would create a safe space for sidewalks and pedestrians and the business community and everyone, but these aren't following it. As, as Erin alluded, there's only five that are licensed, but there are 41 locations that we've, code enforcement and the police department have encountered. So at this point, the ordinance, they're aware, the sidewalk vendors are aware that we have the ordinance and how not to follow that. So I think that the confiscation is an option, if that's what the council wanted to move forward with, but the ordinances are, are strong and we do have licensing, but the sidewalk vendors, as in this instance, are not following those ordinances.
Cool.
Okay, so, wait, I'm not, just let me, so, we, so we can't tow, quote unquote, we can't tow this away, right? But we could, we could consider something. When you talk about confiscation, I mean, I'm not necessarily thinking confiscating, but just like you would tow a car. You take it somewhere, and then the person has to maybe pay to recover it. Is that something we-
Correct. I mean, that's why we refer to using the word impoundment, because it's more like an impoundment.
Like an impoundment, not a confiscation, an impoundment. Okay. And to me, you know, that's, I'll, I'll finish there, because I think that's the only thing I had. I mean, to me, that's issue number one for me, is like, they can't be blocking the ability of somebody to get down the street. And I, I would like to explore any, anything, any tools that we can apply that would allow us to remove that. So that's it.
Just have a clarifying point. So we know, for example, this one exists, and I hate that we keep referring, it's just in front of us, so we're, we're going to keep referring back to it. When we talk about code compliance, our city services close at 5:30 and then at 5:00 on How do we, you know, for those that just pop up at night, or at 6:00 PM, or after 5:30 PM, how do we handle that?
We do work with the police department. Our, you know, we, we meet with them on a regular basis. If there's issues we're aware of, especially with instances like sidewalk vending or legal vacation rentals, we do work together to notify each other. And the problem that Erin had already discussed with this is because they're not driving and because it's not beyond, it's not, we can't require that they provide us their license, we're not able to actually issue a citation. Or we do to the information they provide us, and so, you know, how do you keep? The enforcement of it is difficult. But we do work with the police department, and our police department partners do go out when code enforcement is not available.
So if someone's calling in to complain, for example, because, you know, we are complaint-driven here, so say someone calls in, but you guys are closed, is PD the one that's getting the calls too at the same time? How do you mitigate that? Because, again, like, you're not, technically, you are not available as a department, and I think that's the same case with LA County Health. If I'm, correct me if I'm mistaken.
LA County Health does go out at night. I'm not sure exactly what their hours are, but with, when the police department does go out at night, LA County does go with them on our special enforcement details. I will stop, Abby.
Mayor, councilmembers, we do recognize that this is a challenge. We do receive the phone calls. We have a quality of life hotline. Typically, what we do is we tell them that they, or if we receive by email, we let them know that they can inform the police if they've seen that during the evening hours. We're going to come back in September with a Neighborhood Services action plan, if you will, on how to approach enforcement. One of those questions will be, how do we handle things in the evening hours, weekends, things of that nature? That's going to require some changes amongst our staff, potentially, potentially some other agreements that will have to work out. But we do recognize this, this is a challenge. As of now, police are about the only ones that can respond, but we, we are hoping to bring some solutions to you in September.
And then, I think, as we're talking about LA County, is LA County providing us the resources and inspectors as we request them, or do, is it lacking in that space?
We've done some joint education with them, but I would turn to Manny, Chief Sid, actually, if he has additional information on that.
Thank you.
So, again, good afternoon. As, as Director Calvert just touched on, you know, I just want to highlight the fact that this, this is a code enforcement issue, so it's led by their effort. Naturally, here, you know, like we do with all city services, a team effort, so we look to support them in that effort. And when there's gaps currently, after hours, weekends, as you touched on, we do our best to try to respond to these on a complaint-driven approach. Along that same spirit, in conjunction with CDD, we have built, Lieutenant Corrigan and staff have built a relationship with LA County Health. And what we've been able to get them to do recently on a relative consistent basis, essentially once a month, to go out and do directed enforcement, to contact the locations that we're aware of and go around the city, make contact with these vendors. And what they are doing is confiscating, in most instances, they are confiscating their food when they can do that. The, the county arrives on-site, knowing that they are essentially going to start confiscating people's food, because they know- people's food, because they know that, per their own rules, they would not issue a license to these vendors for many of the reasons that Councilmember Kasaki touched on. So.
So you mentioned, like, once a month?
That's, that's pretty good, considering how, as they all described, their, their resources are stretched pretty thin. We have really impressed upon them, up to including feeding them, and really trying to foster the relationship to get them to come out once a month.
Okay.
As you know, Mayor, Sergeant in 88 cities in LA County, and every single one of them is grappling with these issues. So that's the resource, limited resources the county has.
I mean, I, I recognize that, but, okay. Not, not a fault of our own, but, yeah.
I would just add, and I'm sure this has been an experience that the departments have had, is that, my understanding is the charge the Department of Public Health has also, though, is to be very, you know, cooperative with the vendors as well and try to get them to comply as well. So that's sort of the, different counties have different approaches on that. We have one that's certainly trying to be a little bit more hand-holding with, with folks as well.
To the city attorney's point, it's just been this year, probably spring into this part of the summer, where we've got them to come out on a regular basis. I think in late 2023, we were struggling to even get them to come out. So we've made some strides in that regard, but to the city attorney's point, they, you know, they have a sometimes different philosophy and approach with how they go about it.
Thank you. All right. Councilmember Najjarian? Yes, please, go ahead.
Yeah, we are in a very bad situation here. This is a terrible law that was passed in 2018. Let's just call him out, Ricardo Lara, who later has gone on to become our Insurance Commissioner. This law was supported by the ACLU, many other groups, Betzetic, the Economic Roundtable, the LAANE, Los Angeles Alliance for a New Economy, LA County Fed, Los Angeles Walks, and it goes on and on. And it was written very, in a very detailed manner, where it gives the cities very little room to, to maneuver. I'm upset that when this law was coming through, our Sacramento lobbyists did not bring this to our attention. There were a few cities that signed on against it. Sydney's, the nearest city of Santa Clarita, obviously, they were aware of the implications that this was going to have. But I think we were, you know, just last week, for example, and not to denigrate the issues involved, but there were five or six bills that brought, that were brought before this council, dealing with certain types of issues, that I think were less far-reaching than what we're dealing with here today. I don't think we can take their property just because the law is written as such. It would be a, a punishment, a penal action, which the ordinance, which the state law specifically says we cannot do. We're limited to the administrative remedies, which, as we all agree, really have no teeth to them. They don't have to show their ID if they don't want to. They don't have to do anything like that. There are plenty of lawsuits going around. City of LA was sued by these people. When I say these people, a, a group that represents the sidewalk vendors. LA had put some strict regulations in place against the sidewalk vendors, mainly distance regulations from their sports arenas. And they said, well, we don't think you can do that. Despite it being a legislative action, which some in this room believe are entitled to unfettered discretion, a Los Angeles judge, Judge Chalfant, said, no, just because you're making laws, we're not going to give you the discretion, the typical abuse of discretion standard. You've got to show why your law has direct relation to, the buzzwords that kept going around, the health, safety, and welfare of, of your regulation. I think LA realized they could not make that, and I understand their case settled somehow before it was appealed to a higher court and got a little more crazy. So I just don't know what we can do. I really think, I mean, I agree with all your sentiments. It takes, it takes business away from brick and mortars. It's obstruction of the sidewalk. It's, it's dirty. They have diesel generators. They're using propane, which we dealt with just a few days ago, in this, actually, in the scope of methane. We are, we're hamstrung. I think what we need to do is try and find some legislation that's going to give us some, some safety. One of the things they say, they argued in this case, was, hey, Los Angeles, don't complain about the seats on the sidewalk. You've got your alfresco dining program throughout the city. So you're unfairly targeting these street vendors with their seats out there. And they could point to Brand, they could point to Kenneth and all the places that we do have alfresco and say, don't, don't discriminate against us. You've permitted alfresco dining. And if they look closely, some of our alfresco doesn't, doesn't comply with the ADA restrictions in terms of the walkway, in terms of the distance from the bus stops, et cetera. So I think we're in a really tough situation. I'd like to do something, but I don't want to go too far and get sued, because I think the, you know, they have the, they have the upper hand in this. Unless there's going to be some legislation involved, I just think we're stuck. And I don't know what, what we can do. Maybe rather than prohibitive measures, work with them, try and get them to work with us, maybe get some assessments from them for the DGA, for the cleanup that's done, ask them to contribute. I've had a hot dog outside Giggles. I've had one of those tacos outside Trader Joe's. I'm guilty as charged. I mean, I was hungry and I couldn't resist, but that's still.
Bourbon Steakhouse.
I haven't been to the Bourbon Steakhouse. So I just, I really think we're stuck. And, and I would ask our legal team to give us some direction on that. I don't think we can take their equipment. Clearly, if they, if they don't get a permit, they're violating our laws, but all we can do is give them a citation, that they're not even giving us, giving us their ID for. So it's an ugly situation. I think legislation is the best way out of this, and we should contact either through our Sacramento lobbyist or through a sympathetic representative, either Assembly or State, to bring something forward, to give us a little more sanity in regulating these issues.
Councilmember Kasaki, can I take the speakers first, and then you can?
Yeah.
All right. We have Tigran Azatyan. Rick Lemo.
I'm just going to ask the second speaker.
And Marco, yes. I understand you're visiting us.
Visiting. Yeah, I have to catch a plane in about two hours and go to another place, but I, Councilman Najjarian, I am really familiar with this issue. This came out of Richard Lara, who is a state senator, who never resolved the issue at MacArthur Park. I worked for Councilman Ed Reyes in the early 2000s, and Ed Reyes had me study MacArthur Park. This was an issue that the LA City Council never, ever dealt with. So the only way Lara thought that he would deal with it is by making it a state law. And you're absolutely right. All the business improvement districts in the state, chambers of commerce, were totally unaware until Governor Brown signed this into law. And then we played catch-up. But what I would like to say is, San Diego, and I live in San Diego and I work all throughout the state, but in San Diego, there was a huge contentious issue. 250 people at a city council meeting trying to deal with this whole issue. They passed a series of laws. Yours is much more stringent than the city of San Diego's, but it turned, after six months, the legal vendors, who are following the rules, were having a lot of problem with the illegal vendors that were not following the rules, as the slide showed. So the city of San Diego, as of about four months ago, adopted, they amended their municipal code that allowed for impounding of vending equipment. And I'll very briefly talk about what the basis of impounding is. And I worked closely with San Diego PD, and they came up with some of these recommendations. City may impound vending equipment for any goods therein for the following reasons: leaving vending equipment or goods unattended, vending prohibited goods, vending without a valid vending permit, vending food without a valid San Diego County Environmental Health permit, vending in violation of the division of the city, the sidewalk vendor refuses or fails to provide identification upon request by enforcement official, vending in apparent violation of sidewalk vendor refuses and fails to remove vending equipment from the sidewalk, park, or other property within 30 consecutive minutes after being instructed to do so by an enforcement official, a vendor that blocks or obstructs the free movement of pedestrians, vending in a manner that creates an imminent and substantial danger, environmental hazard to the health, safety, and general welfare of the public priority or the location of the equipment, and then a vendor who has, within a 24-month period, been issued three or more administrative citations for this. So I would suggest that you look at this. This was adopted, presented by the San Diego City Attorney. I gave it to the city manager and gave it to Chief Sid, so they could take a look at it. We know that right now there's an ongoing violation on Brand Boulevard, which restricts, specifically restricts vending between Lexington and Colorado, and has since 2019.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your time. Mr. Lemo.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I understand what your, your challenges are. I very quickly asked our chief of police, what happens if he pulls me over and asks for my driver's license and I say no? Do you know what happens? They're going to take this short, chubby little guy to jail. If I ask for a vendor's license and he tells our police no, that in itself should be enough of a violation, and I think what you have to do is chip away at the block. The more hassle we give, if they're business people, they'll go someplace else. So first, maybe what we need to do is ask them for their license, not their identification. They don't have to, by law, present their identification. But every license has to be brought forward. Walk into a bar and ask someone for their liquor license, and they'll produce it. It's usually hanging on the wall. You can get in an elevator in this building, and our permit for the elevator is on the wall, or there's a sign that tells you where to find it. So that's the first place to become a bird in their saddle. Next up, we have to make certain that the police are respected by every citizen, including these transients that come in here. You have to remember something. They're not paying tax. Our city makes nothing from them. By the way, our ordinance, at one point, did say they were going to be part of their license, was they were going to have to put money aside to clean up after them that would go to the district. There's no reason you can't hit them with a rather substantial fine of, look it, we don't make the rules, the district told us they're going to charge us $500 every time they clean the sidewalk after you. Okay, good, that's another $500. I think if you make enough of your legal problems, though, if, if, if challenges, they'll say, you know, it's just better to do business someplace else. We have to put ourselves in the fact that this is grossly unfair. What I mean by that is, we are requiring other businesses significantly more hurdles to jump, to open up, than any one of these businesses had ever had. And that's just not fair, in, even, even in the wild and crazy state of California, where the majority seems to get pounded down quite a bit. So I would ask you to do whatever you can. We've got a police department and a city attorney that want to help. Let's come up with whatever we can to pile on every law that is legal, and see if that helps. Thank you for your time.
Haratun Haratunyan, followed by Ann Kim.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Good to see you guys.
Welcome.
I'll make this quick, because a lot of the points that I wanted to bring up, you all brought up, so, thank you. You know, I've, I've been in the, the hotel and restaurant business for 25 years, in three different states and seven, seven different cities. The last 20 years, including West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, and now, and now Glendale. I, I don't see anything good out of, out of this at all. And, and quite frankly, it's ugly. You know, we have a lot of hotel guests that spend a lot of money to come to Glendale and stay, stay at that property, the Glenmark, and they don't want to sit outside and enjoy their breakfast in the morning and, and have to listen to a generator, or, or, you know, have to, have to look at some ugly stand out there that, that probably shouldn't, shouldn't be there. I know a lot of the public health issues have been brought up already, but again, being in the restaurant business for so long, I mean, every day, we're required to take temperatures of food, three, well, I have them do three, four times a day. You can't tell me, there's no way that somebody's going to properly monitor these, these pop-ups, these, these sidewalk vendors, to make sure that they're even, they're even washing their hands, whether they're preparing our food, you know, where there's, how they're storing it, how, how they're cooking it. You know, or, like you had said, I've, I've enjoyed a dirty dog outside the Hollywood Bowl before, probably not the next morning, but, you know, it's just, there's a huge difference between that or, or setting up a stand. When I first came to Glendale five years ago, I was so honored to be in this city. I wanted to learn everything about this city. I, I went around and introduced myself to everybody. I met this guy that owns Muffin Can Stop Us, and he had this tiny little hole in the wall across the street from the Glenmark. I'm like, how in the world is this guy going to survive? How's he going to do this? And he did. Now he has three stores. I don't think that would have happened if there was a vendor sitting right there selling breakfast, breakfast muffins. You know, it's just, it, it just, it takes, it takes away and, and doesn't allow a fair competition for the, for the local businesses. You know, it, it creates an economical impact on the community as, as well as labor law complaints issues. You know, it, back to the hotel, you know, as far as complaints that you would receive from a guest, it detours people from wanting to come back to that area of Glendale. Well, I have the nicest hotel in, in, in the entire city of Glendale. I don't want people to be detoured to come to my property because they think the street is ugly, or they're being harassed, or they can't sit outside and, and enjoy a dinner because it's noisy, or, or someone's shouting.
Thank you, sir.
Sorry, I would have talked faster. Thank you.
Mr. Peter Baklasarian.
Thank you to the city council for taking this matter up. I have expressed my thoughts to many of you over the past couple of years. I come here as a resident of Glendale for four decades, as a owner of a business, family business, in the restaurant business for, again, multiple decades, and on behalf of multiple restaurants that were here, that had to leave because they operate restaurants and have to be there. And, you know, I know that we can't take the, the other factors into, because of the state law, with respect to unfair competition or other things, but I think the city did a great, great presentation of all the existing laws that exist. And, you know, I think, I, I've lived in the city my whole life. I think we have the strongest, greatest police force of any city that I've seen, and I think that's ultimately where it's going to have to come down to. I think the, the chief mentioned the, the inspections with the county health inspectors, and perhaps the solution is there, whether it's monetary with overtime, or with a really putting a or with a really putting a critical eye as to, you know, the regulations. There is a health issue here. I can tell you, as somebody who's been in the restaurant business, it's impossible for these people to comply with the health regulations. And somebody will get sick, and people probably have gotten sick from these street vendors. And, you know, I just want to bring up something that just came up yesterday. It's more about the homeless issue, but this will get there too. Langer's, which we all know and love, has been around for centuries, and now they, they, or decades. And now they're, you know, saying they have, potentially have to close, partly because of the, the homeless issue. And I think, as we've seen with the, the case law that took decades, you know, years for it to come around, we're going to see the same thing with the food vendors. But until that happens, we can't wait, as Mr. Najarian mentioned, for, you know, the state may never take action or reverse their position on this, until it gets too bad. But until then, let's enforce the laws that we have. Let's look at the neighboring cities. Maybe we have to beef up the stuff. West Hollywood, as I've suggested to several of you, has really strong regulations. I don't see an issue there. I don't, haven't seen a problem in Beverly Hills. In fact, of the quote-uncut cities that actually take actions, I only see the issue in Glendale. I don't, haven't seen it in Burbank, haven't seen it in Pasadena, South Pass, Arcadia. So something's going on. I think we, we, we're typically, we're the first to pull people over here in the city, good or bad. And we're not the ones taking that same action here. I think that's the problem. I think maybe we do it once a month, and maybe that's something you guys have to address. Maybe there's a, a financial incentive for the... I, I know all the health inspectors. We have seven locations in LA County, and I can guarantee you those people are ready to take action.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Councilmember Kusakian.
Thank you. I do agree with our last public speaker that, you know, the once-a-month enforcement is not enough. So, you know, I understand what Mr. Najarian, Councilmember Najarian is saying, but I can't wait for legislation. Waiting for Sacramento to correct a mistake would be akin to, I don't know, waiting around in a, in a lifeboat with really little hope. So I'm not going to pin my hopes on Sacramento doing something. But I do think that they have some great suggestions have been made here in these chambers. And one of them is the consistency of enforcement will get the message across that this is not a city where people can, you know, play a shell game by, you know, maybe removing their operation for a day and then coming back, you know, the next day or a couple of days later. So I think that we need to be smarter in our enforcement to make sure that if they are going to operate, they are operating within the law. If that means, you know, allocating funds from our own coffers to help pay for that inspector to come and be housed here in the city for two months straight, going around and making sure after hours, when the issue is most prevalent, well, daytime and evening, because now they're at alt-hours of the day, then we need to have that. And again, this is about public safety and welfare of the city. I, again, I appreciate the, the arguments for the competition to business. And there are a number of legacy businesses in this city that I would not like to have disappear as a result of either our inaction or us just throwing up our hands in frustration and saying that there's nothing we can do. Legacy businesses like the one Mr. Bagdusarian's family has started. But putting that aside, let's take into consideration that this is a public safety and health issue. And again, I respect anyone who is courageous enough to have a, a street dog outside of any establishment. I am not that person, but I am more concerned about, you know, the, the unsafe storage of food that is being sold to the public. I am concerned about flammable equipment, sometimes even charcoal grills that are being placed on sidewalks. It is an absolute menace and unsafe situation. And there's no two ways about it. Sure, you know, in terms of Mr. Najarian, you're talking about, you know, our alfresco. Most of our alfresco is done in the parking spots that we allocated for that reason. There may be one or two. I know of one that you're referencing regarding an ADA issue, but that is one I believe staff is trying to come up with a solution to. It's not to the level that some of these, bless you, some of, that some of these vendors have, have taken, they've taken more than an inch, they've taken, at this point, more than a mile. There is some of these operations where it's absolutely impossible to make your way through the sidewalk without having to walk through their business. And sometimes you have to come off the sidewalk to be able to do that. And I think that's not right. So I am for doing whatever it takes. I'm not here to just simply hear a report from staff as to what we can't do. I want to know from staff, specific steps. You need us to appropriate funds. Tell us this is how much we need to do this, and I'm ready to do it.
Councilmember Brotman, and if we can keep in mind that we have a 6:00 PM meeting that's starting.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just interested in what the last speaker said about some of our neighboring cities. So I hope if you're looking into this, we could also compare notes with them. West Hollywood, Beverly Hills, I heard Pasadena, South Pass. If there are things they're doing that we're not, I think it would be instructive. That's it, thanks.
All right. So I'll, I'll try to keep mine brief for the sake of time. I am the person that eats the hot dogs. Some of my favorite tortas come from street vendors in Hollywood. But I do also recognize the health, safety aspect. And I, despite what the state law states, I do care about the impact that it's having on our small businesses. I would definitely say this is a perfect example of policy and legislation that got passed, without really thinking through the implementation part of that policy that I always talk about, and the unintended consequences of a policy. And so I am interested in wanting to codify something with impounding. And then I recognize that you also mentioned something about failing to cooperate. Take a look at anything that I guess was given as an example from San Diego. I think both looking at, I think you've heard the conversation off this dais about both wanting to make sure that we're still a city that, you know, allows for it in one way or another, but some of the concerns that were raised to take into account as you're looking to bring something back to staff. And then I think I would be open to looking at, you know, if we need to get some sort of staff onboard on a temporary basis to help. I would be very open to that. I think that's a great idea. I would say that, well, if we are talking about legislation in the future, there, you know, every year you'll see in Sacramento amendments to bills. And I think the potential for that is actually there for this, especially if we team up with other cities. I'd like for our consultant to take a look at if there are any proposed bills or proposed amendments to, specifically to this bill. I know that, you know, several years ago, I actually worked on the AB 626 bill, which allowed for legalizing home-cooked meals. But again, this is, it's part of like folks not doing it without a, without a license, and how we're able to ensure that the health and safety of our residents and visitors is taken into account. So maybe our consultant can take a look at, you know, what discussions are happening up in Sacramento around this bill. And, you know, for us to also approach our state electors in requesting that they put forth a cleanup bill based on our conversation today. So that's kind of where I stand. Anything else that you need? So...
What do we need to say this afternoon to get the ball moving on serious enforcement and ensuring that we have the resources necessary to enforce it?
Councilmember Kusakian, good question. I think so, two, direction we seek on two points. One, regarding legislation, local legislation. So if we get a motion directing us to review and, and, and bring back to your report on, that would include a provision on impounding, as well as failure to cooperate, again...
I would support that.
That would be one motion. Then if you want to provide, I, I think the second item is just provides direction on increased enforcement, including what the cost of resources of that would look like. And then you, the, as a council can make the decision.
Those are the directions you're seeking. I will gladly make both motions.
All right.
Mayor, we do have those two callers waiting still on the line.
Callers or cards?
Callers, callers.
Oh, where did they put in?
Yeah, they called, yes.
Oh, okay, all right, go ahead.
Joe DeSantis. Joe, you have three minutes. Go ahead, Joe.
Hi, good afternoon, and thank you, Mayor and council members. My name is Joe DeSantis, and my family has been operating restaurants in Glendale for over seventy years. I'm a third-generation founder. My grandfather founded Pete's at Pete's, it was started on Colorado and Glendale Avenue in the 50s. I currently operate LA Italian Kitchen and the Glendale Galleria. And I, I appreciate you taking time to address this situation. As it seems that destabilization of businesses seems to be under attack in many different ways. The legislation that came out of Sacramento with street vendors is just an example of that. And I do think you hit the key points with your, your plan of attack and understanding the laws. And in the outline of the laws, as I heard on this meeting, I would suggest that we look at some policies and the, or why not issue is enforcement of the current laws and understanding what those might be. And I've noticed you have a license period of one year. I think maybe you should consider license periods of shorter periods of time. That may, that may help. People might see value in shorter-term licenses as it may be a temporary location. You don't know the, the lay of the land. Enforcement could come through a third-party vendor as well. A third-party vendor is almost similar to a, a guy that get car towed away. Goes to, you get a tow truck vendor, the police call him out, and he gets called out, the car gets towed away. That could be something that happens here, where the city has a third-party vendor that comes in and removes the facilities if they don't comply within 30 minutes. I do like what they said about San Diego. The licensing fee increase could be another approach because there are certain costs of, obviously, operating a business, whether it's on the street or in anywhere else, that comes upon the, the city of Glendale. So you do need to cover your costs, and I think $400 is not nearly enough money. And perhaps you break it up in smaller sections so that they renew more frequently. I think the city ought to look at defining locations on a map that have sidewalks in commercial areas that are 10 feet wide. Because if those areas are not consistent with the, the law, then they can't obviously open there. So part of the licensing programs is to say, hey, where do you plan to set up? And if the guy, or whoever is operating the business says, look, I am going to set up here, say, well, no, that doesn't comply with the law for the residential section or the commercial section. So I think having a, a map where the, the businesses are defined, where they can operate in a legal manner according to state law, I think that would be helpful. And I do like the part, we have a coalition with neighboring cities to fight...
Aram, just, at three minutes, I, we had rules about, just, thank you.
Good afternoon, and thank you for addressing this issue. You know, this doesn't make any sense. The picture that Councilman Kusakian showed is located immediately across the street from the property that I own and developed. It took me five years to get my entitlement, and another five years to build the premises. And I had to go providing sprinklers, hose, ADA compliance. And we have inspections from the health department every other month. And someone can just drive up with a bike and put set up shop right across the street. That doesn't make any sense whatsoever. And our affair is that to the tenants that pay us rent to run a restaurant, where somebody can just come, pick a location on, on the sidewalk and set up shop. It just doesn't make any sense. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Brotman?
Yes. 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 Yes.
Yes. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Someone.
Second.
We'll be back at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Glendale 911, what's your emergency? What's going on? Hold on one second. I'm going to talk to the paramedics, and I'll come right back to you, okay? Do you know if he took anything? We do have the paramedics responding right now. We are coming with the lights and sirens, okay?
How old is he?
He's 15. He's not moving at all. He hasn't moved in a long time.
Is he breathing? They're on their way. They're on their way to discuss. Has he taken it?